Okay, good evening. It is 6:37 on Monday, December the fourteenth, and I now call the Wittenwood City School Board of Education meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rugless?
Present.
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Culetti?
Present.
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Thank you. As you can see, our meeting this evening is being conducted via blended live and Zoom model. We did have some technical difficulty with getting started, but the Waycross Media is on site at the high school cafeteria, 1231 West Kemper Road. Just as a reminder, we do follow, all of our work follows the SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive, which is established by the district to cover our overall goals, which is student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement. Our first item on the agenda tonight is music of the holiday season, courtesy of the Wittenwoods High School Varsity Ensemble under the direction of Mrs. Beth Miller and Mrs. Kelsey Demage. I believe that's supposed to be virtual, so it should come. Thank you. I think I know. The Board of Education and the administration would like to extend their deepest appreciation to the Wittenwoods High School Varsity Ensemble students who did that pre-recording for us and their directors, Mrs. Beth Miller and Mrs. Kelsey Demage, for providing a beautiful holiday music for the board meeting tonight. We would like to wish each and every one of you a very safe, healthy, and happy holiday season. Since we don't have, we're online and there's no one to enter or exit our meeting, we will forego the three-minute or five-minute recess and will move us right into our regular board meeting. The next item on the agenda is 3.01. I understand from my Madam Vice President that there are no public comments at this time. So seeing that there are no public comments, we will move right into the next item on the agenda, which is 4.01, the Wittenwoods Teachers Association representative. I believe I've seen Mrs. Baker on the line. Would you like to have comments at this time?
Yes.
All right, thank you. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Smith and board members. WWTA would like to wish everyone a happy and most importantly, a healthy holiday season. We are looking forward to seeing everyone in January and we are ready to make 2021 the best year of learning yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. The next item on the agenda is 4.02, which is the Association of Public School Employees. Do we have a representative from Oxy in the room or on the line?
I'm present, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferguson, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you, Madam President. Welcome back. Madam Vice President and board members, Superintendent Smith, I just want to say I would like to wish all of our members and staff a happy and safe holiday and to our high school varsity ensemble, they did an excellent job. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferguson, and to both yourself and Mrs. Baker, we wish you a happy, safe holiday season as well. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
I abstain, I wasn't at those meetings formally, so I'll abstain. So the vote passes with the four to one abstention. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the Treasurer's Report of Financial Statements for November 2020. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes. The synopsis of the financials for November would be the year-to-date revenues in the general fund were reflected at $22.7 million with month-to-date revenues of $2.1 million, which was basically our state foundation. Our general fund expenditures for the month were through November were $20.7, which is currently approximately $2.1 million under budget. The financial activity for all funds, we had approximately $46 million, $18 million in the general fund, $2.8 million left in the building fund, and only $19 million left in our classroom facility fund. And that's basically a summary of the financials through November.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of November 2020 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation of the Investments for November 2020. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, our investments for the month of November yielded $18,948. The general fund was $7,798 and the building funds were $11,150. We had very few maturities in the building funds for the month of November. So that's why the interest is down. Also, interest will be starting to go down because we have less funds available for investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented. I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.02, or the Resolution Determining to Proceed to a Levy and Additional Tax for the Current Operation Expenses of the 10 mil limitation. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, as you know, at the last board meeting, you passed a resolution of necessity for a $6.95 mil operating levy. The Hamilton County Auditor has certified that to us and now we are going to go ahead and pass the resolution to proceed with the operating lev- levy on the ballot for May fifth, or no, May fourth, I believe. Unless you have any questions, I'd recommend that you pass the resolution to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed to levy an additional tax for the current operating expenses in excess of the 10 mil limitation as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which are the reports of the superintendent, specifically the school reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. First of all, thank you very much for giving the administrators the flexibility to move to three different plans because we've used those plans very, very aggressively and you will see the outcome. The board agreed with a conversation with the superintendent that we would go virtual on November 30th to the 4th of December and I'm going to have, we also have two tracers that work in conjunction with the CDC. Our legal department with Ms. Wilson and human resources works with the adults and our student services director, Ms. Bray, works with the students. And so they're going to both come up to give you an overview of why it was so important for us to have the week go virtual right after Thanksgiving. So you'll see what the mitigating numbers would have been had we not done it that way. Ms. Bray will go first with the student report. Ms. Hobbs, will that be on the screen? Okay, thank you. Make it as big as you can. Okay, that's good.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Vice President, board members, and Superintendent Smith. I'm here to give a brief overview of the COVID update and possible exposure had students return after Thanksgiving break. In collaboration with the CDC, Hamilton County Health Department, along with the district nurses, the resources that these individuals provided, Courtney Wilson and I, determine people who are either quarantined and/or were in isolation by staff or students. So I'm presenting the students. During the weeks, or during, let's first start November 23rd, the week of November 23rd, that was the week of Thanksgiving. So all students and staff were not present that week. So I analyzed the data, starting with those weeks, starting November 23rd through December 7th. That's when we returned. Again, in collaboration with the CDC and all the individuals that I just mentioned, it was determined that we had 66 students during that timeframe who was quarantined and we had a total of nine students who were in isolation. I think it's very important to point out that when individuals are in isolation, that means that those individuals are either probable positive, which means that they are a close contact with either a family member that they live with, such as a sibling or a parent who has tested positive. So they're either probable positive or positive. And so in this case, we had nine students. So at the bottom, if you can read, there's a, composed a narrative. So, and this is just reflective of high school students only. And so if we were to go through every student in every building, we would have a number of students who could have been affected if students returned after Thanksgiving. So if you consider an average high school student who has seven classes per day and the average class size is 25 students per class. So if we take one isolated student, which means that that student is either positive or probable positive and you calculate that student taking seven classes times 25 kids for one student, that one student can affect 25 kids in seven classes. That's one student. So if you multiply, let's look at the high school students. Six students were isolated. So if you multiply six students times 175 students, that total could have been, for one student, over 1,000 kids exposed. So if you marinate on that information, if we would have done that, or if the kids would have returned back after Thanksgiving, we could have had thousands among, thousands of students affected. This information is informational. Are there any questions? And again, this was for high school students only, but we had an elementary student who was isolated and we had two middle school students who were isolated.
I do have a question. So because we have some students that at one point were coming to the school and then some that, you know, when we went to virtual. So are these numbers reflective? When you say, you know, you had some students in isolation, so that means that they were actually here or? I'm trying to understand the difference between isolation and quarantine and are these terms connected with students who are attending school?
So again, the dates are when students were not in the building. So isolation means students who were either positive or probable positive, meaning that the isolation period, there's an isolation quarant- an isolation period of at least 10 days that they have to be at home. So that they're not affecting other students or staff members in the building.
So this is just a scenario, okay, we've identified individuals who were possibly positive or positive and then there's individuals who have quarantined outside of?
Correct. And these numbers are reflective of students that were not in the building. So they were affected at some point either before they broke for Thanksgiving break or they were affected either during Thanksgiving break.
So the piece that you're describing to us is if we would have returned on November 30th as scheduled, then our outbreaks would have been large and hard to kind of manage simply because we would have had more students quarantined because of the possible exposure.
Correct.
I do have a question. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Go ahead, Dr. Culetti, I'm sorry.
So the 25 students are assumed to be unique in each class. I assume that some of those students attend each of the seven classes and so they're not exactly unique. This seems to be a little bit of an overestimation because of that.
There could be a little bit of an overestimation because these kids could be counted more than once, just depending on the class. But if you keep in mind the average high school classroom size is about 25 students, just keeping in compliance with the teacher's contract. But the average size of each classroom is about 25 students. And then there are some classes that are over 25 students. So it is a little bit on the conservative side. I could be overestimating a little bit, but it's the average. And that's just for high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But ultimately, I think this gives a great picture of the proactive and preventative measures that were taken in place by doing those 14 days or taking that time to say, we're going to have a break and allow us to figure out what's going to happen. So thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, the other thing, board, that I want to make clear is it wasn't students off from school, it was students being on the virtual platform. So they were still learning. The one thing that, and it was hard to track all of the data and I think Ms. Wilson and Ms. Bray did an excellent job because remember, some of the students that we're referring to have siblings in other schools. So that could have been a more of a devastating situation. Having the pleasure of getting some information from Mr. Denny from LJB, the, one of the LJB contact persons, she mentioned that either a family member of hers, there were like two students that actually went to school on the 23rd and 24th of November and there was some kind of tracing between those two kids. And right after the break, the week of November 30th, 120 students had to be quarantined just because of those two kids. So we know that one of the things that made it, you know, really interesting for us is even though we were on Thanksgiving break, both Ms. Bray and Ms. Wilson were still taking calls where people were saying, hey, I tested positive or my family member tested positive. And what was good for us is we weren't in session because we wouldn't have been able to count all the people that they may have come in contact with.
Yes, and in addition to that, like Mr. Smith stated, just one student can have several siblings in the district, which would, if there is a positive student, they can cause their siblings to be positive probable, which again could cause a domino effect of quarantining several classrooms throughout the district. And we're not talking about lunches, if they're eating lunch. So it's a huge domino effect or would have been had those students come back after Thanksgiving.
So actually, we are still in phase three. We had mentioned that we would try to move to a more aggressive schedule. We're going to hold that for now because the Thanksgiving break actually created more cases than the Hamilton County could actually really deal with. And then the other part is we're waiting to see, we didn't really ever get past the Halloween celebrations on the 31st of October. And so we moved into another celebration, which was Thanksgiving. And of course, we're going to move into two more celebrations, December 25th as well as Octo-, I mean, December 30th. December twenty-fifth, as well as Octo, I mean, December thirty-first. So Ms. Wilson's going to come up and give you some information about the adult exposure, and then I'll give you a recommendation.
Good evening, members of the board. As Mr. Smith stated, after the Halloween trick-or-treat numbers started coming in, Mr. Smith said, you know, we really need to look at possibly, you know, rethinking our plans. And so one of the things we did is we, initially, we're scheduled to go remote after Thanksgiving break. I mean, I'm sorry, we, we were going to go to school on Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, Wednesday would have been a virtual day, and then it would have been Thanksgiving. So we actually ended in person two days early, which was the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So we didn't have kids come back after that Friday. Instead, they were remote. So as a result, and I think Ms. Denny did, is that the staff report? So we looked at the staff numbers, and as you can see, that we had twenty-three positive, so, or isolated staff members from the twenty-third until December seventh. And then we had fifty-seven staff members that were quarantining during that time. So had we not made the decision to, to use that week after Thanksgiving as a remote week, and that you can imagine the impact it would have had on our staffing abilities. Because if you're quarantined, you can't, you can't come in person, and if you're isolated, you certainly can't come in person. And so what we tried to look at is, in, in general, each staff member touches or interacts closely with at least three other staff members. So for example, a teacher may have a paraprofessional in their classroom, they may have a co-teacher in their classroom, and then may interact with other support staff that are in and out of the classroom, like the speech and language pathologist, OT, occupational therapist, or even the principal. So we tried to just sort of estimate the, the close, close contacts of the average staff member. During our remote or blended days, we have roughly ten kids in our classes, except for on Wednesdays when we're remote. And pre-K to sixth, and roughly fifty students per day per staff member at the high school level. We also, also included in this number is transportation, central office in the community building. Our transportation workers, they transport kids, Wynton Woods students, as well as private parochial students. Wynton Woods kids, because we're on a blended schedule, our buses are not at capacity. They are rough, we have roughly twenty-three seats, is that right, Steve? Twenty-three seats, and they're not full because of our blended schedule. However, our private parochial schools are, some of them are going full-blown, and so they are at normal capacity. In addition, so the numbers would be closer to forty-six on the non-public routes of students. So if you imagine a one positive case on a school bus, in a classroom, or in one of our offices, you can imagine the spread. So the sheet before you, and it's also in board docs under your public content, just shows you a breakdown by building and department of what it looked like during the Novem, November shutdown. And you can see where it's driving the decision-making, moving forward, knowing that we have a potential super-spreader event with the holidays, you know, with Christmas, as well as New Year's.
Yeah, the other, the other interesting part of this, based on the private and parochial schools of students that we have to transport, that almost took our bus fleet out.
Our program.
Because of the exposure of the bus drivers. So we had to be very, very careful. The November thirtieth came actually at the right time, where people were actually going through a quarantine process because of the fourteen days. The fourteen days actually were right on target for us, and many of our drivers are back full service. One of the consequences earlier is some of our drivers had to drive double routes in order to make this thing work. And then down the road, some of my colleagues made some decisions that I don't think would be in good business for us to make. There was a lot of conversation from, from parents saying they wanted all of their kids to come back. Some districts did that, and they went to a three-feet situation, and many of those schools actually had to shut down. So the six-feet is still going to be our platform, and the new recommendation is, the week after, the week after the holidays, the January fourth to the eighth, we're going to go virtual again, because that actually was an advantage for us. We are not purple, we are red. However, there is some anticipation that some things could change after the holidays, based on how many people are out in the community, and based on how many activities take place. So we're going to try the same thing again. We were very successful with it. The mitigating circumstances that we were able to discover from it were actually to our favor. And I have to tell you, there are six other districts that are moving to the same platform now. I had the opportunity to have a conversation with all superintendents from Hamilton County on Friday that, like I do every Friday, and they were very, very interested in our plan because of the outcomes that we have.
And I'll just add one last thing imparting, is that we did meet with our union leadership right after the Thanksgiving break, after we returned in person, and got feedback from them that they, that their membership felt that that cushion after a break where people are kind of celebrating and doing things, you know, beyond our control, gave them an extra level of, made them feel extra protected and safe, knowing that the incubation period for the, the virus is anywhere from ten to fourteen days. And so having that time, you know, allowed anyone that might have developed symptoms, by the time we got back, to sort of know, or, you know, be relatively safe returning without issues. So they endorsed that decision, and we shared with them some thoughts about trying it again after winter break, and they said that they were very supportive of that idea as well. So, thank you.
Questions, comments, suggestions, ideas from the board?
I just have a question, Mr. Smith. So I'm sure that you all have done this, and I just don't know the, what you've done, so I'm just asking a question for my clarification. As far as communicating to the parents whenever you're going to go for virtual, a hundred percent, you all do that through written and through one call? Is that how you communicate to the parents that you're going to go a hundred percent virtual for, you know, you did it the week after the holiday, you're planning on doing it again in January. So is that how you go communicate with the parents, so that they know to prepare to have their kid at home the whole, their student at home the whole week?
Yes, ma'am. We actually sent out that correspondence at least two weeks in advance, so that the parents know how to prepare.
So probably before- I'm sorry, Dr. Kupuleti, just one more point. So probably before, when they go out on Christmas break, you could essentially ramp up to send that communication-
Absolutely.
Because, but, but, because they won't be coming back for a week, so they'll essentially get an extra week at home.
They'll get an extra week.
They'll be learning, but they'll be on the-
Yes. Good point, yes. So they'll have a virtual week, like they did the week of November thirtieth to December fourth, and we'll communicate that information to parents. One of the things that we like to do is we like to inform the board, and then we go from there. So we wanted you guys to know what the plans were, but instead of just having a plan that didn't have any real substance or data, we want to give you data that supports the work that we're doing to keep the, the district safe and keep our teachers, you know, able to report as scheduled.
So I wanted, I wanted to say that this seems to be a conservative and wise and successful approach, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kupuleti. So we'll send correspondence out. The information that you receive from Ms. Bray and Ms. Wilson, we'll make sure you guys have it. In the event that someone asks you questions about it, you'll have it in your own records. And then we'll send you correspondence about the transition plan that's going to take place the week of January eleventh, week of January eleventh. We were scheduled to be full, face-to-face, all students. We're going to go to and remain in Phase Three. We're going to stay with our blended approach, and just to see how it works, and to make sure that we're reducing the numbers, like we've kind of, you know, told the parents that we would definitely work diligently to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Or, does anybody else have any other questions or discussion or around this for Mr. Smith, or for Mrs. Bray, or Mrs. Wilson? Okay, since no one else has any other discussion, this was for our information. We appreciate you receiving this information and how you come about with your decisions on, you know, whether to go fully virtual. It's not just haphazardly you look at the numbers, we've tried to listen to what the CDC is saying, so we appreciate that work and the effort that it takes to put that, kind of work, you know, put that together. So our next item on the agenda is eight point oh-two, which is the first read of new rejected replacement and revised work policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. The first reads are a rejected policy sixty-one fifty-two point zero-one, waiver of student fees for instructional materials, replacement policy sixty-one fifty-two finances, student fees, fines, and charges, revised policy fifty-six-ten, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion, revised policy sixty-one forty-four investments, revised policy procurement, federal grants and funds, policy sixty-four twenty-four procurement cards, and finally, policy eighty-eight zero-zero operations, religious, patriotic ceremonies, and observances. These are all first reads, and they'll come back for a vote or a conversation at our next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As, as Mr. Smith has said, these are all first reads. There are a total of seven policies here that we need to look at and be ready to vote on at the next regular board meeting in January. So if you read them and you have any questions, you can get in contact with Mr. Smith in between now and then. So thank you again, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is eight point oh-three, which is the facilities update. I believe Mr. Denny may present, however, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone. Pleased to report with regard to the facilities under construction in our district, that they continue on time, they continue on schedule and on budget. We are at a, about an eighty percent complete rate right now for the, each building, and we are approximately the same for finances expended as well, legs just a little behind completion, as, as would be necessary. Very excited with the progress of the buildings. They're really coming along nicely in the, the finishes, and the quality of the work is very good, so we're very, very pleased. Roofing at South Campus is at a hundred percent complete. Exterior walk-through for punch list, which is kind of a big milestone for the K-six, occurs this week, which is very exciting. That means masonry is a hundred percent complete, means door installations a hundred percent complete, it means exterior security cameras are approaching complete, and lighting, exterior lighting is also completed. So there's just a lot of good things going on that we're at that point right now, about three months ahead of the end of the building, the delivery of the building. Substantial completion date is February tenth, twenty-twenty-one, so after the holiday break, we're about, what is that, forty-five days or so away?
Yep.
Forty days from the turnover of the buildings to the district. So it's a very exciting time. It's approaching rapidly, and we're very pleased with the progress. Just a reminder to anyone tuning in at home, that you can get updates every week called the Weekly Blitz. It's published by the district and Skanska Megan Construction, and it gives you an update on what happened that week. It's got photographs, and that can be found at www.wyntonwoods.org, and scroll to the bottom of the screen and look for "construction updates." That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Ward, are there any questions for Mr. Denny and Mr. Smith at this time?
No questions, but forty days, wow, that's very exciting.
Thank you.
I kind of had a hard time hearing that, so.
I was just saying forty days was exciting.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I also, I also, we, we know that this is all just important to keep us aware, but it is exciting when you drive by and you see the, the small changes of the building, and how you can see even on the outside is becoming more and more complete. And I get to ride past the high school, because it's close to where I live, but I took a, a drive down to see the, the middle school on Fairgood, and it is looking amazing as well. So it is a very exciting time for us to see the progress. I can say, Mr. Denny and Mr. Smith, I really appreciate having those construction updates, because while I was out, I could go and click and see some of the progress that was going on. And I, I, you know, I was looking at it and going, wow, you know, this is really great. But to hear that we're eighty percent complete, and that the same for our finances, is that we're kind of, we're on target there, and that the projected completion date is just a little over forty days, that is, you know, that is exciting, you know. So I, I think I join all my board colleagues when I say, you know, we appreciate everybody's being conscious and aware of the, the finances and the money that we had to put toward it, and, you know, staying on top of everything and, and getting done in such an appropriate way. So we really appreciate what you have done. Thank you so much.
And Madam President, the, the other thing is, when we get the opportunity, I think we need to reach out to the community of Green Hills, as well as Forest Park, thanking them for their patience, and especially the homeowners, with, you know, all the construction and all the dirt and all the things that have had to happen. They have been very, very patient without any problems, no concerns, no reports, and that's actually unheard of when you do a construction model of this size. So we, we appreciate them. And I know Mr. Birdie has been, and Ms., and Dr. Kupuleti have been holding the, the Green Hills people down. So, but we appreciate them tremendously, because when you look at projects of this nature, most of the time, there are lots of complaints from the community members about all the noise and all the other, the, the excess traffic that goes through their community. So we've not had any complaints, and so we appreciate it tremendously.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. I do agree with that. So the, anybody else have anything that they would like to add to that? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is nine point oh-one, which is the personnel schedules. So Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and board. The recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignations. Schedule C, personnel for certificated. Schedule D, personnel certificated and uncertified certificated. And Schedule DE would be leaves, basically more of a FMLA, or EFMLA. Maybe I have that, maybe I have that letter wrong, Ms. Wilson. You gave me that look like there's no E in there.
Yeah, there's no B today, yes. There's A, C, D, and E.
No, no, I was referring to what we call the EFMLA, because it's based on certain things about family members.
Okay, I see, yes, okay. Okay, Ward, if you don't see anything that you would like to, well, let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor. A motion is in order for personnel schedules A, C, D, and E.
I'm making a motion to approve the personnel schedules- the personnel schedules as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, which is the change orders. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. With any construction project of this magnitude, we would all know that there has to be change orders from time to time. And so it is, it is a customary process and as well as part of our board, I mean, our responsibilities to the board, that any information over $50,000 has to come to the board for approval. And the first one is the K-6 emergency responder radio coverage equipment of $85,364.53. And then the second was the emergency responder radio coverage equipment of $86,851.25. Those are change orders that are part of this process simply because this radio equipment has to be in compliance with all the safety regulations to make sure the building is operationally sound.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve these change orders as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is second reads of the new replaced and revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Board, you will be voting on these particular policies because these are the second reads. And it was 2266 nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and district programs or activities. Policy 3220 professional staff standards-based teacher evaluation. Policy 1520 employment of administrators. 1530 evaluation of principals and other administrators. 2431 interscholastic athletics. 3124 employment contract professional staff. And finally, 5200 students attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve these second reads of the new replaced and revised board policies as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the secondary new replacement and revised board policies as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Actually, just a quick comment and it doesn't change the policy or anything, but on the nondiscrimination policy?
Yes, sir.
On page 10, there's a huge blank space. It's just, I think it's just a formatting issue. Doesn't, doesn't impact the policy at all, so.
Okay. I'll check into it. Okay, I'll see it. Thank you, Mr. Birdy. And Madam President, we, we try to make sure that there are no more than seven policies so that the board can have ample time to review. In some cases, Niola recommends going through 12 policies, but we're not going to do that. That's, that's absolutely too many to try to search through and get a clear understanding. So the maximum at any time, unless these are companion policies, will be no more than seven. Yes, unless they're all on one page.
Any other questions for discussion? Seeing, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, the Board of Education reports and the legislative report. While I'm the legislative liaison, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smith to bring us up to date on legislative matters.
Yes, Madam President. The first one that I want to talk about is House Bill 38, which will cost districts millions in revenue loss. And basically, there was a big meeting with BASSA, which is the Buckeye Association of Administrators. And it really talks about the 133rd General Assembly. House Bill 38 would especially harmful to schools as it gives businesses wide-ranging ability to contest property values due to pandemic-related issues. The timing of their challenges, not only for this tax year, but also for the next two years, would not allow time for the auditor to adjust the effective tax rate for school districts and other government entities, resulting in the potential loss of millions of dollars in tax revenue. We understand the need for the tax relief for businesses impacted by the pandemic, but not at the expense of our school districts, which are already dealing with budget reductions and increased costs to the pandemic. So House Bill 38, and I have to tell you, Mr. Seymour has been very diligent where people are coming saying, we want to contest our property values due to the pandemic. We think it should be lower. He's pushing back, saying, give me evidence and give me proof. And then they come back and say, well, we don't have any proof.
Actually, I mean, property values are going up. Not, maybe not so much on the commercial side, but on the residential side, they are.
So that's a good thing, I guess. The other one is the Senate's, the House Bill 305, the Cup Patterson. And anybody that's been in education understands that these are the financial gurus. They are creating a new financial system for school districts and other public entities to provide public, primary and secondary education to be implemented in 2022. And so it has some stipulations. It requires state operating funding to be paid directly to school districts, community schools and STEM schools for the students that they are educating. There's a lot of debate about this particular bill, a lot of conversation. I think the votes have stopped temporarily until after the school year, I mean, to, after the new year, but it will be back full force probably January 4th. New funding formula, I think they've tried, based on my time in education, they've tried a new funding formula probably 45 times. And it has not impacted the school systems whatsoever. So stay tuned.
At least not positive.
No, not at all, not positive. It has impacted. I take that back, but not in a positive way. I did send a report to them saying that if you follow this funding model, you would be in good shape. But of course, they didn't want to hear from me on this one. But I'll try it again. The other thing is there's a companion to this bill, which is the bus purchasing grants, beginning in 2021, to implement a program to distribute bus purchasing grants of not less than $45,000 to city, local and exempted village school districts for the purpose of replacing the oldest and highest mileage buses in the state assigned to routes. In this particular situation, we are in good shape because between Mr. Denny and Mr. Seymour, they keep our buses operational and make sure that we pick up a couple of buses each year in order to retire a few more. And then the final part of this particular bill is the base cost and per pupil capital amount, capacity amount. And it's this formula that they use to determine the per pupil local capacity. They don't have it right at this point, but I guess they're going to keep working on it. And then there's the disadvantaged pupil impact aid. The disadvantaged pupil impact aid is subject to a guarantee of 2022 for each fiscal year thereafter. And it's a contrasting bill that there is a formula for computing, but this bill is not really ready for the House to really do much with it. They're still having some conversations and deliberations about it, but I will keep you guys informed along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anything else that you would like to share with us at this time?
Let's see, if there was anything else that... Nope. Mr. Seymour, anything to add?
Well, we should probably add that you and I have always sent letters and to our representatives in support of the Cup Patterson funding. And we've tried to make our voices heard and join the ranks of all the superintendents in the state of Ohio with letters of support for the Cup Patterson funding plan. Ohio has no funding plan right now and we desperately need one.
So if you heard him correctly, he says Ohio does not have a funding plan. He didn't say they kind of have one. There is no plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour, for that update on the legislative report. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. Mr. Birdy, you have the floor.
I did email to the board members and Mr. Smith, Mr. Seymour, my Great Oaks report. It includes documents I've sent out in the past, current roster of board members, just in case any of you want to know who's, who's on the Great Oaks Board right now. Harry Snyder's messages to the Great Oaks Board as well as Career Technical Education legislative reports and Diversity and Unity Committee report that they're working on. And then we have the Spotlight on Students. I sent you the whole report. It's around page 12, I believe, was our Wenton Woods students who are being recognized. All three of them are, received the Scarlet Citizenship Award weekly winner. First was Jaden Denton from, at Scarlet Oaks Exercise Science and Sports Medicine. Darren Haig is in the Web Applications and Game Development Program. And Maja Jones is in the Dental Assisting Program. So congratulations to those three students from Wenton Woods. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, Board motions and recommendations to set the date, time and location of the 2021 organizational meeting. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the date, time and location of the organizational meeting, which is projected for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. So I will entertain a motion at this time.
Location? Right here?
I'll make a motion for the organizational meeting to be held on Tuesday, January 5th, at 6:30 PM, at a place to be determined.
We need a place.
It'd be in a cafeteria.
Okay, right here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hand by Zoom.
It's been motioned. Did someone second it?
I'll second. I'll second.
I can, who seconded?
Gino McGowan, Mr. McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Dr. Johnson, I don't know if you were able to hear me. Mr. Seymour had a question on the location. And I just clarified that the location is in the same format that we're in now. It would be the cafeteria and we'll also have the blended model with Zoom links.
I would say yes. If there are people who want, well, let's say this. Will we be able to get into the building on January 5th, Tuesday, January 5th?
Yes.
Okay. So if we'll be able to get into the building at that time, I believe that those people who want to come live, then it should, we can arrange to have that set up for that day. For those of us who are going to do it via Zoom, then we should, we will see that technology has a Zoom meeting set up for us as well.
We would just, Dr. Johnson, we would just need to know how many board members plan to be live.
And I suppose that those board members can let you know the closer we get to that date. I mean, I can say that I will probably do the Zoom meeting. But closer to that date, Dr. Culetti raised his hand as well. Closer to that date, I guess other board members can let you know, Mr. Smith, so that, you know, Jeanette could be prepared. Does that sound feasible?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's just that, that...
January 4th is a professional development day. So that 5th...
Our date we picked is the 5th. Is that a development day, a professional development day?
The professional development day is on the 4th. So the staff may not be where we need them to be. So that's what I was making a point, that we would need to know sooner than later, not the, not the day of.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So, please be considerate to let them know prior to the day of. But the day that we're looking at is Tuesday, January 5th. So the 4th is a Monday.
Yes.
So we're looking at Tuesday, January 5th, at 6:30. But we will definitely keep you informed as we approach that day, okay, Mr. Smith?
Yes, and just keep in mind that the Friday is the 1st.
Will be virtual.
Yes. And, and then if anybody else decides to be virtual moving forward, you can let Mr. Smith know so that they can plan accordingly.
Yeah, if we, if we could, yeah. But if we could know the week of the 28th of December, that would be very helpful.
Okay. All right, Board, we will be considerate and let them know the week of December the 28th, whether you plan to be live or on Zoom. So we'll do that. Okay. Seeing, no other questions or discussion. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.02, which is to appoint the president pro temp until the president is appointed at the 2021 organizational meeting. Board, a motion would be in order to approve the appointment of the president pro temp.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Johnson as the president pro temp until the president is appointed at the 2021 organizational meeting.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is comments from the Board of Education, the superintendent and the treasurer. Um, the first person that I have up is, uh, Mr. Birdy. Would you like to have comments at this time?
Yeah, just real quickly, uh, thank you to the Varsity Ensemble for, for the music tonight. That was great. Um, and I can't take any credit for Green Hills not complaining about the construction, Mr. Smith, so, um, I live close enough, I hear everything, too. You know, hopefully someday we'll get the vaccine distribution to, uh, everybody in education that needs it and our students, and we'll be back to normal, but I'm not sure that's going to happen anytime in the near future. So everybody stay safe, have a good holidays, um, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. McGowan, would you like to have comments at this time?
Yes, I'd like to start off with, I know you've been attending, um, some of the meetings, uh, virtually, but it's nice to see your face again and welcome back.
Thank you so much, Mr. McGowan. I appreciate that.
And also just say that I know we've had a lot of challenges in 2020, uh, with COVID-19, but kudos go out to the students, the teachers, the administrators, and especially our, um, our superintendent, uh, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, I want to thank you so much for your support and your leadership through this cra- through, uh, these crazy times.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Um, Dr. Culetti?
I'm just so very pleased that the district is being, taking care with all the students and teachers and the administrators, uh, in this terrible time. And I wish everyone to stay very safe until we can get over this.
Thank you, Dr. Culetti. Uh, Mrs. Rugless?
Well, everyone has touched on something that I was going to say, so I'll keep it simple and just say, welcome back, Dr. Johnson. It is wonderful having you back. And happy holidays to the Wynton Woods Warrior Nation.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Rugless. Mr. Seymour, would you like to have comments?
Just happy holidays and welcome back, Dr. Viola.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Um, Mr. Smith, would you like to have comments at this time?
Yes, uh, Dr. Johnson and to the rest of the board, um, I can't say enough about the flexibility that you gave the administrators to be able to move, uh, quickly through those plans because we've needed to use every one of them. We've not had the pleasure of going face-to-face, uh, full school at this point. You know, it is our goal, but, uh, our first goal, first and foremost, is, is safety. And so we've done a very, very good job keeping our distance, uh, making sure our kids were safe. But the other part is to, uh, Dr. Culetti and, and Dr. Johnson, uh, you seem to be happier on Zoom, so I may have to try that at set point because you guys look a lot happier than the rest of your colleagues sitting here. So I don't know if it's the environment that you're in or the Zoom, but I'm going to have to try that one because your smiles are just compelling at this point. Doc, I've not seen neither, either one.
Yeah, you can't see our smiles.
I've not seen you guys smile that much since we met, so it must be something about the Zoom operation, so thank you.
I'm sure they're smiling under their mask.
Doc, you've been smiling since you walked into the room, so it's, it's good.
We're all happy to be alive at this point, right? I think. Um, thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, you have any, anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I do want us to, um, thank Waycross because this is not their normal process to bring all this equipment in, and they have done an incredible job since the, the virtual opportunity. So I'd like to give them a, a, a hand for everything that they've done. Thank you. And then our, our incredible tech director who finds you guys on Zoom meetings and logs you in and gets you in secret rooms that we don't know about. Uh, Ms. Hobbs has been absolutely wonderful. So thank you for the secret rooms, Ms. Hobbs. And of course, her right-hand person, uh... Yeah, Mrs. Denny, I, I want to say something about Mrs. Denny. She's been under the weather a few days, and, um, she bounced back and came back today to make sure that, you know, the information that we needed to give you guys the overview about who was exposed and who was quarantined, and she did it without missing a beat. So thank you, Mrs. Denny, for everything. Appreciate you tremendously.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Denny. Um, there's just a couple of comments that I have, uh, that I'd like to, um, express. I would like to sincerely thank the teachers and the staff for all the work that they've done over the past year during these unprecedented times to support our students in our district. Also, as Mr. McGowan said, a, a special thank you to Mr. Smith, our superintendent, and to Mr. Seymour, our treasurer, who do, who work cohesively to make sure that, um, everything goes the way that it should go, as well as to their administrators who have coordinated all of the programs in support of the needs of our students in the district. Um, there are way too many people for me to start naming individuals, but I would like to say a special thank you to the executive director of Business Affairs, as he has kept us up to date on what's going on with the building, and his, uh, team, the director of Student Services, the director of Teaching and Learning, uh, and the director of Technology, as all of their jobs had to be, um, uh, transformed in order to take care of our students the way that they needed to be taken care of, um, doing, uh, part of live learning and virtual learning. Um, and I can't forget the director of Child Nutrition and their team, um, with the multiple meal distributions of the nutritious meals and making sure that they were available to, uh, uh, the students in our district, and, um, also to the maintenance and the custodial, uh, teams. I could go on and on, but they kept, they keep our building safe, clean, and sanitized. And while people think that's not a big job, that's a huge job. That's just as important as anything else that we're doing, because they keep our students and our staff safe in between when one group of kids come in and then the next group of, uh, students, uh, come, come, go out. And also a countless number of our supporters and volunteers and mentors, just to say thank you to all of them. And again, I could go on and on and on. And if I missed anyone, please know that it was not intentional. Um, I will say that this board truly appreciates your commitment, your time, and your dedication that you have given to the Wynton Woods City School District. And, um, that basically concludes my comments, but I just want to say, we do thank you all from the bottom of our heart. And if I, I, I didn't want to try to, this is just off the top of my head, I didn't want to try to, to mention names, but these are just the ones that come to mind, uh, that, uh, you know, uh, really affect our day-to-day operations. Even our transportation team, our transportation team, they have to make sure those buses are clean in between groups of students. It's just, it's just that, it's like, um, I think of our team right now as like the parts of the body, and everything has to work together cohesively. You know, everybody can't be the head, everybody can't be the neck, everybody can't be the fingers or the thumbs or the legs, but we need all of those parts to make this thing work. And we, I just appreciate it. I know that this board appreciates, um, what, uh, you all have done to make this thing work, to make the educational and academic programs continue to work, and to get the students that, uh, need the support, the support that they need. So I just really appreciate that. We appreciate the Varsity Ensemble for coming in, um, doing the pre-recording for us, uh, and, and we always thank the Waycross community for, uh, what they do for us. Uh, but this is, this is extra.
Yes.
This is extra special.
Dr. Johnson?
We're naming two things. Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, give one more, uh, uh, just, just kudos to, uh, the work. ...with teaching and learning, but, uh, I'd like to, uh, have the team give a round of applause to Dr. Martin, who defended her dissertation last week, and she is absolutely amazing. So thank you for everything. We, we really couldn't end this meeting, Doc, without you doing something special, so I, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot. But usually, when we come to this time, this holiday time, you always have something that your mom said. So can you, can you say, tell us what your, your mom would say right now? Just get, at least give us one small thing. It could be a repeat from last year. We don't care.
Oh, boy. What would my mother say right now? I don't know. I, off the top of my head, I can't think of it. Good, better, best. Never let it rest. Your good is better and your better is your best.
Way to go. Absolutely. All right. Thank you. I know you, I know you're always ready to have one of those in, in your, in your bank of knowledgeable, uh, quotes.
Hey, listen, I, I, I have so appreciated, this is a sidebar, I so appreciated the fact that I was able to get home in February to see my mom, because I haven't seen her since February.
Bravo.
And she's in her 90s, so, you know, seeing her is very important to us, but also keeping her healthy is important to us. So we know that the 10 of us can't flood in from all these different states, so we just, we got her a FaceTime, we got her a computer, which she never said she would have. But anyway, she has it now, and she, she's enjoying it, and she's FaceTiming us two, three times a week, so.
Way to go.
More wisdom to come. Anyway, that, that concludes my comments. Uh, that brings us to item number 1301. Uh, board, there's not a need for an executive session at this time. So again, I would like to sincerely thank the Waycross community, uh, for their service that they have been throughout this year and even in past years for, uh, videotaping our regular board meetings, um, and now they're coming to do even our work sessions. So we really appreciate that. And with that said, I will call this meeting of the Wynton Woods City School Board of Education regular meeting on Monday, December the 14th, 2020, adjourned. Thank you. Take care of yourself and your loved ones. Stay healthy, safe, and well, and have a wonderful evening and a very happy holiday. Meeting adjourned.